My volumes and I'll forget all day tomorrow that I got my ring turned off all these missed calls and messages.
No.
Every time.
On the evening.
What's that?
On the evening.
They call all day, but I forget I have my ring on. So I'll have a whole bunch of voicemail messages waiting for me sometimes and texts that I don't even realize they came in.
Well, you don't have it, but I have, which is if I don't recognize, I don't answer.
I do that too anymore.
Do that as much.
Unless they're calling my, my work number, then I have to answer, but even now it's tell Marcus I've gotten onto that a little bit too. Actually, that's for.
Okay, yeah. Cause I'm a little bit. That's a much better. Got a ground.
Oh, next thing I'll forget is I forgot that me and Mike. Beer. So the next time when I try and get Zoom tomorrow.
Say what now?
I'll, I'll forget to obviously this, I always put my, my computer on mute.
All right.
My first Zoom meeting, I'm forgetting that it's on mute. And I do that awkward thing. I was just staring at the screen, trying to make myself heard until I realized.
I had to go out to Bethlehem. It was about a half hour that when we were done. And then the next half hour was just chit chat, but it's like it was two hours away for a half hour meeting.
I'm like in zoom for those type of things.
I mean, just zoom it, but I'm not the project manager, so. We're in an in-person meeting. Yeah, Zoom is nice for that kind of thing.
That's, it's perfect. Then you can share plans on the screen. I like that for that kind of stuff. For certain things happen, it's done in person. It's like, well, then you can do those kinds of things on Zoom and not get a whole lot of people watching. That's a good day.
Nothing, nothing major. Four hours in my trust. On a beautiful day.
The new.
Really would rather not have to do that.
Scott, be ready.
I'm good.
Yeah. Yep.
Good evening. Tonight's meeting has been advertised to be held in person and online using Zoom with login and call in information posted on our website. Tonight's video and audio is being recorded. For tonight's meeting, Robert's rules will still apply. And the meeting will be run by the chairman who will be assisted by an employee managing the Zoom site. During the meeting, in order to offer comment, you must first be recognized by the chairman. For people utilizing Zoom, you will need to use the chat function to be recognized. We ask that you text your name and your address and your request to speak will then be passed on by staff to the chairman to be recognized. Once recognized by the chairman, we ask that you unmute your microphone. And after speaking, we ask that you please mute your microphone. East Hemphill Township's public comment rules will apply for all public comment. You must be a resident or business owner in the township to speak. You must identify yourself by name and address before speaking. And sign the guest login meeting, meeting minute for meeting minute purposes. Or follow the chat procedure that was previously discussed. Comment is limited to three minutes and must be about the agenda item being discussed with the exception of public comment for non-agenda items. No action will be taken on any non-agenda item of any non-emergency nature during the public comment period. All comments should be directed to the board. We will now move on to our first agenda item. And I would ask that you join me and rise for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. And now the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first order of. Business tonight will be from the police department. Chief.
So last week at the public safety work group meeting, I shared with. The group an email or two emails that I had received with accolades for one of the officers, two of the officers. And after reading it, Mr. Russell requested that, and yeah, make this a common practice of, of sharing. The emails that we get on a regular basis of the, the, the good things that our officers are doing day in and day out. I told him earlier, he may regret that because it's been a busy. Two weeks here. So after. The first email that I'm gonna, I'm gonna share, I've had a number of other emails this week. So. We're very proud of the, the group of men and women that work for the police department. And the services that they provide day in and day out. So it's with honor. I'm gonna read some of these accolades that have been received. On January 31st, we had a serious car accident, Colonial Crest Drive at Roystown or McGovernville Road. Young man that was involved in the accident was a driver of one of the vehicles. His girlfriend. Sustained a double compound fracture to her femur. In the accident, a few days afterwards. He called in to speak with the supervisor, the two officers that were. On scene to, to thank them for their professionalism and handling the incident. And the accident, but specifically wanted to. Relay accolades to Officer Pete. He spoke with this gentleman at length, showed him the utmost respect and empathy. He stated he was very emotional about the crash, didn't know if his girlfriend was even gonna make it at the time. And in his words, Officer Pete gave him a hug, provided comforting words, called a chaplain. And stated, he made me feel like his purpose was to care for me. And instilled in me, the police were there to protect and serve. This gentleman wanted to make sure that Officer Pete was recognized for his service. And said that he'll never forget Officer Pete or Officer DeJesus, who was the other officer there and wanted to make sure that. We knew what kind of officer he was. The same morning as that, I actually received an email from Officer DeJesus, who, who was on scene. Also commending Officer Pete. Officer DeJesus has been in the profession for over 30 years. And he gave credit to, to Officer Pete. And he said he made, he was very proud to, to be part of East Hemphill Township Police Department and law enforcement on that day. Received another email regarding Officer Solari, who was one of our newer officers. And I think one of the nice thing is a couple of these emails I'm gonna read are actually some of our newer hires. So it's nice to, nice to see that they're out and about and getting their. Their, their faces known, but also certainly nice to get some positive feedback from people that have interaction with them. Officer Solari was called to a local business in the township for a pregnant homeless female with a sign soliciting money. The woman that, that called it in actually is the one that reached out to us that. When Officer Solari arrived, she stayed in the area. She was just kind of curious how the police department would handle the call. And she was extremely impressed with how well he treated the pregnant. Female and stated that he was very kind and compassionate. So he, she wanted to, she was adamant. That the chief and his supervisors know how impressed she was with him and that he's a great representative to the department. Received another email for Officer Armstrong, who responded to a business, the plant manager called in. To let us know that he was able to de-escalate the situation in minutes. He was very professional and an all-around outstanding officer. He wants the. Business plant manager wants to make sure that he keeps a positive relationship with East Hemphill and he was adamant that. This information and how well Officer Armstrong handled himself in the incident was related to supervisors. Officer Torres and Officer Cruz. Received accolades from a gentleman whose truck ran out of gas and they actually pushed his car. To the gas station. On the roadway to get him. To the gas station. He's, you know, the gentleman wanted to make sure that, that we knew about this. He was very, very thankful for. The two guys, their strength and their effort and said it's really not a police officer's job to push. Motorists who run out of gas, but he was very, very appreciative of their professionalism and just wanted to pass that along. Officer Jason Skiles, this is actually from today, was it? A, one of the middle schools in the township for a eighth grade class presentation and received a. Email this afternoon from the teacher. Just sharing their appreciation. To Officer Skiles for what he did and how he connected with the kids and the presentation was, was well received. We also received an email from the school district today regarding an incident yesterday. With their thankfulness for the quick response and how the police department handled an incident. That we were able to. Maintain control. Of, of the incident and kind of help de-escalate things by the way we executed what we did there. So. Anyways, thank you for the opportunity to share those.
Thank you. That was well worth the time. So.
Mr. Chairman, if we could just have her one more time relay Valer's first call to duty.
Absolutely. So. Valor, the other week, we had a woman in the, in the lobby who had brought her. Her father in to be processed. He's an elderly male. Maybe dealing with some medical and some mental decline of status. And she was sharing with our dispatcher in the lobby, just kind of. You know, how difficult it is seeing her father and now he did something that we didn't really have a choice and we needed to arrest him and. So on, so forth. So. Our dispatcher asked if she liked dogs and she's like, well, yeah. So while the gentleman was getting processed. Valor went out into the lobby and she got down on the ground and. It, Valor did what he was supposed to do and brought some, some joy and some smiles to her during a difficult time. So. And Valor is slated to get sworn in at the next meeting on March 1st. So.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the Board of Supervisors. Ask the chief to convey the appreciation of the Board of Supervisors. For all of the efforts of the East Hemphill Township Wonderful Police Department.
Any other comments on that?
I agree a hundred percent.
Well, second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Same here. So there was a motion and a second for Mr. LaFever for us to convey our appreciation. To the department, to the men and women that are serving for their efforts and, and recognize them. For their accolades. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
Could I suggest we do that in writing?
Sure. And can we have a certificate prepared then, Ms. Schweitzer, in writing?
Thank you.
Memorializing that.
Certainly.
Thank you, Chief. Up next, we have the consent agenda. These are routine, common items. Are there any? Comments on what's in the consent agenda from the board?
I have a few, if you please. In, and I don't see David Miller in attendance, but on the Brookside Phase One onsite. Letter regarding. Reduction in. In funding. There's a note about a dumpster enclosure and a photograph, and I'm not sure where that is on the Brookside campus. And I was somewhat curious because the dumpsters are under an overhang and I'm. Wondering if there is in fact a design detail for those dumpsters. Or if there's something there that needs to be addressed. So that, that can be deferred to time when David Miller could address it.
I'm sure Mr. Sturgis could answer that at the planner.
Okay.
He's on Zoom.
Yes, the, the land development plan does show an enclosure. They haven't put that in yet.
Where, where is that? Is that at the sheet?
That is, I believe on the north side of the hospital.
Ah, okay. That, that now the photograph seems logical. Thank you. Uh, we've had a great golf month and again, staff at the. Golf course headed up by Mr. Savage, doing a wonderful job. A bit of a minor follow-up to the chief's accolades. There were 25 thefts and 12 fraud cases in East Hemphill Township in the month of January. And discerning as that is. It speaks to the diligence of the police force in pursuing and managing those. Issues. Uh, and I did notice, I noted for questioning the number of false alarms we have and fire alarms, and we only had 29 this month of just half. Of what we normally have. So. Uh, our efforts maybe are bearing some fruit on that. And I had another question for Chief Cotmire. Is the staffing in place for the Roystown Fire Company drivers?
It currently is and we're working on some other efforts from recruitment and retention perspective as well, but it's so far, so good. Yes.
Thank you. Good. Okay.
Mr. Bennett, did you?
A couple, a couple of things. I know on the chief's report, actually it's the public. Joe Vostok's update, there was a roof leak repair at the police department. And we needed to replace some ceiling tiles. Is that, is that part of the new construction or something else?
Part of the new construction. It's been a, an ongoing leak for a bit that we've been dealing with. There's been a couple of different companies that have come out to look. Hopefully we have it fixed this time.
Okay.
But it is on the new portion.
It is on the new portion. Do we have a warranty on that by involved?
I do not believe at this point that there is a warranty.
Okay.
I believe the warranty has expired and we do believe we found the leak. There's two chimney stacks that go up through. And we found that the rubber gaskets that go around them. Whether it was like that from new or whether or not they stretched due to the weather or the heat. But we sealed both of them up and we feel confident that we took care of the water leak. And one of the other things we found, there was also. A small glycol leak in one of the pipes that added to one of the ceiling tiles getting damaged too. And that was also found and repaired. So I, I think we're good to go.
Okay, great. Two, two questions on the monthly treasurer's report. On the. Golf course fund. We, at the end of January, our balance is 484,000?
Correct.
Okay. And on the general fund balance of 67, 6,700,000 in the capital reserve. Does that include the ARPA money?
It does.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Weaver, any questions?
I have nothing.
Mr. Russell, any questions? I have no comments. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Your motion by Mr. Bennett is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weaver. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Abstain.
Okay. Motion carries. Three to zero with two abstentions. I abstained because I was not here on February 1st to approve the minutes. Okay, up next, action items. Musser Bulk Water 742 Coldbrook Road. Waiver of land development for property primarily in Raffo Township.
So this, this project, like it is explained, is primarily in Raffo Township. They're very, very small portion is in East Hemphill. But because it is in both municipalities, they do have to get a waiver from one so that the other can review it. I think Nate maybe have some additional comments and I think we're gonna pull up a plan. That shows, highlights the portions that are. In East Hemphill versus what's actually in Raffo.
Yeah, only a small portion are in our township. Diane's gonna highlight them that. It equates to about half an acre of the overall 79 acres of the property. And all the development that's occurring is at the far north corner within Raffo Township.
Any comments on this? Any comments from the audience on this? If you could please come and give your name for minute purposes. And if you didn't sign in, could you sign in for us?
My name's Steve Noonamaker. 3273 Randy Road. I was just curious, what's this development? Or what's it going to be developed as? It's just, you just said that it was going to be. Reviewed for development.
Mr. Sturgis, maybe you can explain. What they're proposing.
They're adding a 13,000 square foot building to support their agricultural business.
Okay, I was just curious. Need to start coming to meetings and I just wanted to find out what it was. And to the man in the front, I'm sorry I hit you in the head.
Any other questions or comments from the audience on this? Okay. Uh, this is a pretty routine item. There's very little of this. Property that's located in our township. So it will be reviewed. By Raffo Township. So with that in mind, is there a motion to waive land development as a deferment to Raffo Township for Musser Bulk Water 742? South Coldbrook Road, a property primarily in Raffo Township. Okay. Motion for Mr. LaFever is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Russell. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Special event, 2023 Hark Try For Life Triathlon. On Sunday, May 7th, 2023.
Um, Hemphill Rec Center has once again submitted a request to utilize township roadways for their annual triathlon for life. As you indicated, it will occur on Sunday, May 7th, 2023. There are no complete road closures, however, it does utilize multiple sections of roadway within the township and as such. We require them to submit a special event request and also an indemnification form. I did discuss this event with Chief Brubaker. It is exactly the same path as it has taken in the past and has not caused issues in the path. And as such, staff would recommend to the board that you approve the special event application for the Hemphill. Rec Center Triathlon for Life to be held on multiple roadways throughout the township on Sunday, May 7th, 2023. With final township costs determined and invoiced after the event and also permit the chairman to sign. The indemnification agreement for the use of the township roadways.
Any comments from the board?
To your knowledge, have we ever have an issue with this event?
We have not.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the audience in reference to this? Does anyone here up for this challenge? Do I hear a, a motion to approve the Hark Special Event Application for the Triathlon for Life to be held on multiple roadways throughout? East Hemphill Township, Sunday, May 7th, 2023. With final township costs to be determined and invoiced after the event is completed and permit. And permit the chairman of the board to sign the indemnification agreement for the use of township roadways.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Mr. Bennett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. From McMahon, a Bowman Company Master Consultant Agreement Fee Schedule.
So the process of. Creating a traffic engineer is a PENDOT process that township followed. What was involved was soliciting requests for proposals. We received three proposals from various engineering agencies that are already approved by PENDOT. And we reviewed through those. We had a committee that took a look at them. And in the end, the committee ranked them. McMahon was the first associate and we have now negotiated a contract, master contract with them. The fee schedule that is attached is a, the fee schedule that we adopted at the beginning of the year. The township has had a longstanding relationship with McMahon Associates. They are very familiar with our work and what we do. So anytime a road project comes in, they will redo the review process. And this is just the contract that. Designates them in PENDOT's eyes as our traffic engineer.
Are there any questions or comments from the board on this? Any questions or comments from the audience on this? Hearing none, is there a motion? To approve the master consultant agreement between the township and McMahon, a Bowman Company for Traffic Engineering Projects.
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Weaver is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Bennett. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Motion carries four to zero with one abstention. Thank you. Up next, we have the board goals.
So the board has developed goals over the last several years. The board runs by committee. And we have several committees and each of those committees have established goals. The goals that you have before you have been reviewed for the past few meetings for the 2023 timeframe. And I think we, I received comments from Mr. Bennett. I added some comments of my own. And that is what's before you now. If you have additional changes you'd like to make, certainly we can do that.
Um, any comments from anyone here on the board goals?
Yes. Reading again and possibly a bit closer. The change in the Park and Recreation Committee regarding the. Playground, potential. Noel Park, Noel Dorrick Park and the potential sod farm, anything under that purview. We've lost the reference to trails and the development of trails. And I know that trails are something that many residents are very. Fond to have and use them. And I think we should have our. Planning, including the walking trails through the township.
Okay. Any other, anything else that you wanted?
No, thank you. That's my own comment.
I agree a hundred percent with, with having the trails, but the trails are on each planning document from what I understand. And from what I can see. We, we do that routinely. It's been a priority for the board. They're on the master plan.
We could possibly add a, a section in here that simply states that the supervisor would support interconnection of trails and establishment of new trails. As the needs arise.
I just think it should be addressed. I don't care how we address it.
I mean, that's fine with me adding that language. It, you know, would be good for future boards. Uh, to see as this list carries over and changes and gets updated. to see where we're coming from. So I, I have no problem with that. Any other changes or additions to what we have here?
No.
So if I understood you correctly, Mr. LaFever, under Park and Recs, you want to see something added there about trails?
The statement that was replaced had reference to the trails. And so I think the new statement also should include that.
Okay. Well, I think that's, you know, just and a comma and trails. Okay, that's very simple. We can approve it with that change tonight. We can wait till next meeting. What, what's your pleasure?
Approve tonight.
Let's do it tonight.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-three board goals with the addition recommended by Mr. LaFever as presented? Okay, motion by Mr. LaFever is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bennett. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Okay, up next. Ellis Payne, acceptance of resignation from the East Hemfield Township Industrial Development Authority after twenty years of service to East Hemfield.
Mr. Payne submitted a letter of resignation. He's been on the IDA for the last twenty-plus years. Just accepting the resignation. I have reached out to the chairman of the IDA. We are working on a resolution to recognize his service.
Okay.
He hasn't gotten back to me yet, though, so that's in process.
Any comments or questions from the board on this? Any comments or questions from the audience? All right, hearing none, is there a motion to accept the resignation of LSP Payne from the East Hemfield Township Industrial Authority after twenty-plus years of service to East Hemfield? Motion by Mr. LaFever, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weaver. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Up next, we have old business. We're going to hear comments and have discussion again about the church note, master park plan. And, and before we begin, I'd just like to, to speak directly about it one more time. I missed our last meeting. And we've had a few emails come in since then, and I just want to make sure that we're really clear. I feel like there's been some type of miscommunication or misconception, or this board is thinking one thing, and, and there's a group of people that are thinking something else or being fed something else that's, that's not entirely true. So when we start, a master plan, just so everybody is clear, is a concept plan. It's a concept plan. It's nothing that's in stone. This plan will change twenty times in the next twenty years. There is nothing that's been agreed to. There's nothing that's happening right now, this moment. It is simply that, a concept plan. Again, how did we get here? We were approached at a public meeting, and I believe it was our budget meeting. Is this correct?
That's, yeah.
By H Y A. If we would have a willing, willingness, they were looking for additional ballparks. And at that meeting, you know, we made it very clear. You know, we're not looking for new capital projects, but we, you know, do have property in the township. Specifically, the property that we're looking at now on Old and Church Street. You know, and we would be possibly a good partner for them, but they're gonna need, if they want ball fields or whatever it would be, whether it would be ball fields or soccer fields, they're gonna have to take the lead. They're gonna have to come up with the funding. They're going to have to do all these things before any of this is gonna happen. It was then referred to our Park and Recs Committee, and our township, we have several subcommittees. We have a Public Works Committee. We have a Public Safety Committee. We have a Park and Recs Committee. We have a Finance Committee. Those committees are made up of staff and two supervisors each to conduct business, to work with staff, to guide them, to direct them, to bring things back to this board. So this was discussed a few times at our board in regards to the, to H Y A being able to do some ballparks there. We, as a board, decided that we wanted to, and I believe, what, twenty-some years ago, there was an original plan that was created, and I'm not sure by who, for that property, for, for park space. So we sent this to David Millan Association, to David Millan Associates with the task of saying, hey, look, we, we want to see what can go here. If we put in ball fields, we don't want to be ripping them out five, ten years down the road. Where can they go? Where should we put them? Okay? Also, show us what else can go here. So what you see before you is, you know, a wish list. If we had another ten million dollars laying around that we'd spent all the money that we could spend, that's what this park could look like. Okay? The fact is, we don't have any money laying around. And I want to be very clear for every resident that is here. This board and boards prior to us have not raised taxes in this township, and something I'm very proud of, since two thousand eight. There is a misunderstanding that we are looking to spend millions of dollars to put in this facility tomorrow. That is absolutely not going to happen. This plan, like I said before, is gonna change twenty times before now. You know, pickleball may die out tomorrow. I don't think so, but it may. There may not be a need for tennis courts or basketball courts, or, you know, maybe it's lacrosse, maybe it's soccer. But whatever that, whatever you see there is conceptual. And whatever's going to be built there, just like when you came in, folks, you went past the dream park. The dream park, there was very, very, very little township money that was spent on that facility. It was a community effort. It was led by community organizations. The township did take a lead on bringing everybody together, but that money was raised separate from your taxes. The bocce ball courts, same thing. That was a completely fundraised item that went in. So I just, I want to make sure everybody's on that page, because some of the emails that we are getting are just, you know, very, very, very off-base about what this is and, and what it's gonna be and when it's gonna happen. And so that's what I have to say about that. I want to open it up to anybody else on the board. If anybody else has any other comments on this? Mr. LaFever, okay. So we're gonna turn it over. We're gonna hear more suggestions, more discussions on this. And again, I would ask to make our time here productive. If somebody's repeating something, or if you have something to say that somebody else already said, please don't repeat it. And, you know, we welcome comments that you have and suggestions. You know, we have had a lot of good suggestions on what could be here, or things, people we can reach out to, you know, some concerns that the residents had. You know, we've gotten a lot of good feedback already on that. If there's additional, you know, we welcome it. So we'll start on the left side of the room. Is there anybody in the front row that wishes to speak on this matter? Anybody in the second row that wishes to speak on this matter? Yes, sir.
Galante? Three, three, four, nine, Old Road. I just want to preface this by saying I did serve on the H Y A board for four years. I also served on the Hemfield Everimidge Sports Board and coached football there for ten years. So I'm not anti-student or anti-child.
Mr. Galante, I'm sorry. Could you actually speak into the microphone for the benefit of the people on Zoom?
Better?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have three questions to ask you. Okay, number one, how is constructing, when in essence is a baseball stadium, which benefits a specific non-taxpaying entry? H Y A considered a community-based recreation facility?
Can it stop you right there and just let's, because I, I don't think you heard what I said before. Maybe you did and didn't understand. We, this board and this township is not constructing a stadium. We're not paying for a stadium.
Fine, let me rephrase that.
Okay.
Why would you even consider and entertain a project that's in essence a baseball stadium? A township property that's going to benefit a specific, limited group of individuals?
So, just so we're clear, we're talking about baseball fields and diamonds. We have some in our park now. Right?
Would you consider a two-story press box, dugouts, bullpens, stadium lighting, scoreboard, and batting cages to be not a stadium in conjunction with fourth fields and two hundred fifteen-plus parking spaces?
Okay.
You want to build a field, you could build fields. This is a stadium. You're gonna have tournaments in there, light pollution, noise pollution, traffic issues. This goes beyond just building baseball fields or softball ki- fields for the kids. I think that's a very reasonable question.
Okay, go ahead.
Second, and you may have addressed this, but as an accountant and an attorney, as a fraud examiner, I need more specific, specific information, please. What plans of Eddie exist for initial capital funding? And more importantly, sustainable, continuous funding that will not burden and saddle the taxpayers of this, this community?
Again, I don't, and I really don't want to turn this into a back and forth, but I don't know how to be any more clear than my opening statement on that question. I really, the, the township is not undertaking a capital funding project. I mean, that should answer your question.
But what I'm saying is, H Y has about sixty-five or seventy-five thousand dollar budget. How can an organization with such limited funds even conceive to construct a multimillion-dollar project without any outside help?
That's a great question.
That's what I've asked it.
Okay, that, so if, if they, look.
Questions. It's not even reasonable.
If they don't have funding, I mean, sir, again, what you see there, and I, I don't want to be argumentative with you, but what you see there is a conception, and maybe in twenty years, it might look like that. And maybe it's just gonna be a couple of baseball diamonds. And maybe this is just a wish list that they want to see happen.
I understand, but the optics are such, it's a stadium. Why would you entertain putting in press box, scoreboards, lighting? If you really want something for the kids, you have a field there right now.
Okay, well, we hear your opinion on that. What else do you have?
Okay. This may not apply. Is there a specific procedure where we can actually have a meaningful, deliberate discourse back and forth?
Like the one we're having now?
Well, something more detailed, without a time limit. Maybe something just like H Y A approached certain committees.
So we, we, we have discussed that. We've talked about possibly having a charrette or a open house for, you know, to have an interaction with feedback and, you know, I'm gonna rely on staff to put something like that together, but it's gonna be in the future. And again, this goes to the fact, folks, that this, you know, this isn't happening tomorrow. And, and those meetings will take place. We're not going to build something tomorrow without your input and hearing from everybody. So there will be, you know, a back and forth, a give and take, and on, on this, this project, so.
Um, this question, and I mean this with the utmost respect. I'm doing this only because of due diligence. Or any board members have a financial interest, familial interest, or any other interest with H Y A? And if they do, will they recuse themselves of any type of voting on this matter?
So when you say H Y A, well, we.
Meaning the parties involved. Anyone sitting aboard has any familial interest, generational interest, financial interest, conflict of interest? Are there any interests, either direct or indirect, with any one of five board members with this particular project?
So when you're talking conflict of interest, we are governed by ethics that we do have to recuse ourselves.
The state statute for ethics.
So, you know, we are all gonna follow the state statute of ethics, so.
So your response is no one on the board has any familial interest or connections with H Y A?
I just want to be clear, I'm not a lawyer, and I, I, I don't want to be pigeon.
Question. It's a simple question. Anyone you guys related anywhere for H Y A? Do you have a kid playing, a grandson playing, anyone playing? I, I just need to, I think the audience would like to know, is there a connection between the board and this party that's seeking for this particular project to be built?
So H Y A covers a lot of different sports. I've, I myself have had children that have played sports with H Y A. I'm not sure if, if my daughter's affiliated with an H Y A sport this year or not, but in the past, yes and no. I would not recuse myself from this project, because it simply is not a conflict of interest.
Okay.
Um, I, I don't want to step on H Y's toes, but I think there are probably some people in the audience from, from that group. So I don't want to take their wind out of their sails, but I remember from our October budget meeting that they said that they would like to provide the amenities to the fields, and maybe just like one, like a batting cage on one field or a dugout on a different field, just so that the kids get a chance to, to play with those types of things, instead of just the plain old dirt field that they often play on. So my understanding was that any of those extras are going to be provided by H Y A. But they can speak to that when they get a chance.
So in the second row, anyone else that wishes to speak? Yes, ma'am. So we're gonna go on that side of the room next, so we're just gonna go down the row on the left side, so. Sure, absolutely. I'm, I'm sorry. I di- I didn't recognize you guys were a couple, so.
All right, hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. My name is Eric Grobst. I am not a resident of East Hemfield Township. I am a resident of East Petersburg Borough. So I am part of H Y A, so I don't know if that connects me to this.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm just making sure, just doing it every, everything properly. So again, my name's Eric. I am from H Y A softball. I'm actually the commissioner of H Y A softball. I have two daughters who play softball right now. One is ten and one is eight. And as commissioner, I would beat myself up if I had the opportunity to speak on this, and I never did, so that is why I'm here. I understand there are some people in the community that, that think differently, for, for different reasons. So I'm just here simply to advocate for H Y A softball. H Y A, the parent organization, the parent board, is just made up of guys and ladies that just love the sports, love the community, love the kids. I've been coaching for four seasons, and I've played within Hemfield, and then we've had games, obviously, in other areas in the community in Lancaster County. There are other school districts and other areas that have semi-nice facilities. And when we go to these fields or complexes, it's, you know, even the, the six and seven-year-old girls are saying, wow, these, these fields are great, or these dugouts are great. And, you know, as, as a parent, I'm looking, and I'm like, wow, that, that's what's getting you excited, is these kind of old-looking dugouts, which other school districts have things that are probably falling apart, but to us, that looks amazing, because we don't have anything that great here. We're trying to build a top-level recreational program. There's a lot of competition with travel softball, with Spooky Nook, with all of the different organizations, and softball is increasing in popularity. Just in the couple of seasons I've been volunteering with H Y A, we've, every season, we're increasing teams and increasing age levels. So currently, going into the spring season, we have thirteen teams across several age groups. And really, we only have five fields in all of East, I'm sorry, in all of Hemfield School District, including one here, Ames Her, which, you know, we love using, obviously. But any opportunity to get extra fields, especially with a growing sport, you know, having thirteen teams across five fields with maybe four or five days of possible practice and game time. So, so any, anything, and I know it seems like this is, I know you've said, this is, this would be a dream come true for, for any kid to play on a field like this. And especially as a parent, I would love to see my kids be able to play on a field like this. And I know how things move with, with, you know, money being approved and budgets and you know, all the red tape that needs to go through. So I'm sure my kids probably won't get an opportunity to play on this. It would be nice if my kids stayed in the area, and maybe someday they can coach their own kids. So I, I think, you know, obviously, this isn't gonna happen anytime soon, but I would. Um, but I would love to see something like this, uh, in the area. Uh, a- and I know that, that there were questions about how the money would be. Uh, I, I have no idea, uh, I'm just the softball guy. Um, but I do attend our H Y A board meetings, uh, and, and there was some discussion on securing, I don't know, corporate sponsorships or special grants. We're, we're kind of exploring what's out there, what we can do. Um, obviously, that's way above all of our pay grades, so we're gonna try to figure it out somehow. Um, and, you know, I, I would love to speak to anybody about this. Um, you know, we're not some evil, uh, youth association, um, coming up with evil plots to the, you know, destroy everybody's life in the township. Um, but yeah, I, I mean, if it's not this, you know, any old field would do, any old dugout, any, anything would be greater than, than nothing. Um, and, you know, since we're trying to build such a top-level program in such a, a nice school district, it would be nice if our fields reflected the type of program that we're trying to create. Uh, not just now, obviously, but super long-term, fifteen, twenty, whatever, however many years. Maybe I'll be coaching my grandkids and they'll be able to play on this. Um, but that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, go ahead, ma'am. If, yep.
Hello, Kristen Shaneley, I'm also a four-seventy-one Pinkerton Road. I'm not sure if that's this district, I recently moved here, but also part of H Y A. Um, I coach A U, I'm our community outreach person. I also coach youth field hockey, who is looking to join H Y A. So it's, um, very special to me, too. I don't want to repeat everything that Eric said, but I will say, I know you had stated that this isn't something that's just gonna happen tomorrow, and you were addressing that, too. Um, I have not been to these meetings, I've been at coach meetings. We've all said in our meeting, this isn't really gonna be a field for us, so we kind of just not brushed it off. But that's why we weren't here, because we know it's not gonna happen probably with our kids. But hearing that some people are against it, we were like, okay, then we have to be here for the future kids. So, we know this is no time soon, we are all trying to, um, do our fundraising. I don't go to the H Y A board meetings, that's why Eric represents us there, but it's been discussed. Um, I know you can say, we've had sports all these years, we don't even need the fields. Um, I can say just since I was a kid and played sports, it's evolved so much. Um, field hockey itself, uh, in the past few years, I think all of the youth from Penn Manor, all the schools in Lancaster, have been going to Mannheim Township. And that's who runs all of the clinics, all the camps. And I think it was a dad last season that said, why are we pouring our money into Mannheim Township? It could be in Hemfield, it can be in Penn Manor. So, the fall was the first season that we had a youth field hockey program. We had, I think, five teams on one field. We would like divide it up, so like our first and second grade kids were on one corner, fifth and sixth graders on another corner. We got the job done, but you're not teaching the older kids how to actually play field hockey on a big field. And then you go to a game and they're just supposed to know what to do. Um, safety-wise, like nervous, matters. Um, it's not safe to have to share a field with, even softball field hockey with other teams when Township or Central or whoever could be putting in two practices that week, four practices that week. I've now taught six-year-olds how to swing a bat, and now they're supposed to go learn how to do it in a game. And they could be swinging near kids, throwing near kids. If we're not given enough fields to put the kids on to put in the hours, it's not safe, too. So we need more fields. And I do want to stress that it's not just sports, it's not just a game, it's community. It's teaching these kids responsibility, it's keeping them safe, it's, you know, putting back into the community. We've done, um, a program with the Barnstormers this winter where we got to decorate Christmas trees. It involved the kids, kept them busy. Uh, we're going to be walking in the Memorial Day Parade in Mountville. I would like to start getting us into volunteering hours. So it's, if the kids are on the fields, they're playing sports, they're staying out of trouble. It's much more than just the game. Um, what else? I know you addressed that the tax, that it will not be paid with taxes. Uh, I think traffic was an issue that people had been addressing, they're worried about the cars. Um, as you can see, there would be plenty of parking, um, and then they would just have to, with devices, I believe it was discussed, that there would be, um, order to that. But I do agree with the people in that neighborhood, you, you don't want cars flying through your neighborhood. So that is something I agree it needs to be addressed and taken care of. Uh, same thing with the light pollution. Um, from what we're told, there's ways to direct it towards the field so it's not affecting the houses nearby. There could be curfew, I agree with the people nearby, that is something that should be addressed. But, I mean, our fall softball season, again, safety. We were able to get maybe towards the end of our season, like twenty minutes into practice, and we had to close it up because it's too dark, can't see anything, kids are losing stuff, kids are gonna get hurt. If we could have lighted fields, that would be great. Um, other schools have it, we couldn't host some of our home games, we had to play away because of the light situation. Not a huge deal, but it's our community having to travel. We don't look good, we can't host other schools. Um, and the other thing, I think flooding was addressed, people worried about flooding or something, but that cannot be built in with the field, that's something that people who build fields know what they're doing, they would control that. Um, Chris Landis, the varsity softball coach, could not be here tonight, but he's, I guess, spoken on this before. We have his support, his program would be involved with it. Um, same thing, Sarah Brooks, the varsity field hockey coach, could not be here tonight, but she agreed also if we had these fields, she would get her kids on these fields. We could bring in money as, you know, we would be funding everything for the field, but to maintain it, we would have, you are correct, there would probably be tournaments, there would be, um, camps, clinics, all of that, bringing in money. But these kids that are bringing in money, bringing in all this, are also giving back to our community. So it's crucial. Um, I don't know if you guys are familiar with the barn, the wrestling barn? Um, my kids just started wrestling, so I'm not that familiar with it. But that was built by the Shoff Brothers, I believe, you're shaking your head. That was not taxpayers' money, that was not, that was just guys who they loved the program, wanted to support it. They built a building for these kids. So, not saying I'm gonna build softball fields, I can't afford it, but who knows? There could be somebody who has the money, an investor, anything, who might just say, we like this, we want to do that. So it's, we can dream.
Thank you.
Can do that, and, yeah.
I'm gonna have to cut you off because you're a little over the three minutes, probably way over the three minutes, so. But I do appreciate your comments, thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. Is there anyone, uh, in the next row, uh, that wishes to speak? Be row number three? About row number four? Okay, in the very back, is there anybody? Okay, come on, sir.
Uh, Mike Zuber, thirty-two ninety-nine Randy Road. Um, for the pre- previous two speakers, are they residents of East Hemfield?
They were not, and they identified that.
Then they shouldn't be speaking.
We allowed them to speak, I made the decision.
All right.
Okay, so, go ahead, sir.
Well, I, you know, I wasn't gonna come, but, uh, Chris forced me. Um, that's a great speech, but you don't live here. I live by the, I live very near there.
Mike, could you just address your comments to us?
Oh, I was saying, I live very near there. I don't want to hear that there's not gonna be any light pollution, noise pollution, uh, parking problems. Um, I will probably be dead and gone by the time this is built.
Me as, me as well. I, I just want everybody to get that perspective, this is a thirty-year project.
Right, yeah, but that was my comment, so I was just, uh, curious.
I appreciate that, thank you.
One, can I ask a side question?
Sure.
You moved your community gardens up on Nolt Road. Where are you proposing that people are gonna park there?
Ms. White, sir, is.
The parking area is being developed.
It's, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, again, I didn't know anything about it until one day I drove by and they were putting a water line in.
It was in the newsletter?
Well, yeah, okay, thank you.
But that was, that was just to let you know, that was caused, if you notice, we got fencing up and we have security issues with peace, police, and it just wasn't a good approach having people drive behind our public works where we got our plows and all of our equipment to get to the gardens.
So, I, I think it's great.
Initially tracked for that reason.
It's a good use, thanks.
I think I saw somebody else in the back, yes, please come up.
Herb Records, eleven forty-four Old Eagle Road, so just off the, uh, top of the picture there. I am not in favor of the existing plan, I think, for some of the same concerns that we've heard repeated over and over again. Um, but rather than focusing on the negative, I would encourage, I love the idea of an open house and, and having more robust dialogue. I would encourage maybe an alternate master plan that's less focused on baseball and more focused on nature park, open space, and having some dialogue between the two, I think, allows the township residents to give some input about, hey, we like this, we like that. Maybe we can pull from, um, different ideas from the two different master plans.
Okay, thank you. Was there anyone else on the, yes?
Hi, Dan Connell, I live across the street from Herb.
Okay.
I, you know, I just, I, I, I've heard about the project and I thought it'd come tonight. And I just, you know, when I look at that, that's not a park, it's a baseball stadium. And it happened, it's a park on the side, and that's okay, but there are gonna be these concerns. I don't live right across the street like Joe does, but I hope that the people that do live there get included in the plans and how this is gonna go, because I grew up right across the street from a baseball park. I put cardboard in my window at eleven o'clock on Friday night because the lights were.
Well, well, let me just stop, like, that, folks, that is not gonna happen. We are not gonna allow lighting at eleven and twelve o'clock at night, it's not gonna happen. Um, if there is lights, if, if that can be done, if they can come up with the money for that, for lighting, and they can pay the bill for the lights, there will be a curfew to it. So, I mean, I feel like we're getting like the worst, I don't know, I feel like we're being punished because we were dreaming of a park, like No Good D goes unpunished, uh.
Well, it's like I said, I just, that's just, I just want to back up what Joe said. I see a baseball stadium, that means volume, cars, traffic. If there's two hundred parking spots there, they'll be full. If it's really nice, there'll be tournaments, all day Saturday, Sunday, maybe a couple nights during the week. It's not just a park.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Megan Connell, eleven fifty-seven Old Eagle Road. M- maybe fifteen, ten, twelve years ago, I was on the board of Hemfield Soccer Club. And at the time, we were looking for a place to expand our program. We partnered with the school district, I'm hearing very wonderful things about sports. My girls have played sports, my son played baseball, I didn't realize I liked it, sorry. Um, all through high school, college, high level at college. I am not an anti-sport person. But when I hear, oh, the varsity coach couldn't come, this coach couldn't come. Well, maybe the partnership with this type of facility, lights or scoreboards, should be directed to the school district where that would encompass all of Hemfield, not just East Hemfield, who's going to be housing this, or East Hemfield, West Hemfield, East Petersburg, um, Mannheim, uh, Penn Manor, City, I mean, it's, we are, you can't help but look at this and say, this is a baseball attraction. This is where baseball is played in Hemfield in Lancaster County. And being a resident in the neighborhood right nearby, it's very frustrating when you look at this plan that maybe someone innocently came and said, we need more fields, and then we have this gigantic plan. I don't know why we can't put lights out here or two fields.
So, let, let's put the gigantic plan on us, okay? Because what you see before you didn't come from H Y A, it came from us. And we gave our engineer a very specific task.
I don't fault H Y A at all, I understand youth sports play a role in kids' lives. It's just, it's not, it's not the above all and all that you have the most pristine area, the field of dreams, because I went on the H Y A website and they're like, we, they, we build it, they will come. We've been working with this township for a year. I mean, that's really disheartening to everyone who lives around here that nobody was even asked. No one said, hey, what would you like in a master plan? So it's just a very, very frustrating.
Okay, so let me stop you there. You, you're being asked now. Again, th- this is step one, we've got years.
It's really scary when you look at this plan and you live right across the street and you say, oh, my word. My life is gonna change, and it does feel like it's gonna change tomorrow. Right now, that's what it looks like. So maybe the fear, you know, is just like.
Okay, well, can you work with me right now, before you leave? I want you to say one thing for me, concept plan. Concept plan.
Potential concept plan.
Thank you, I appreciate that, thank you very much.
So, gonna offer my services to the township. If you would like them to be part of a committee, because I've had kids in sports and I live nearby.
Okay, did you sign in for us?
I signed in.
Okay, thank you. So I think we're done on the left side, is there anyone else on the left side that wanted to speak? Okay, we're gonna move over to the right side, anybody in the front row? Okay, second row? Yes, sir?
Hey, Steve Noonmaker, thirty-two seventy-three Randy Road. Um, my house is literally right next to the access road, it's right on the corner of the smallest field here closest to me. And we have been following what's going on and coming to the meetings. For that, this is the second meeting that I come to. One thing that just keeps on blaring at us is the size of this thing. And I think I said something the last time I was here, why does it have to be so grandiose? We're building such a giant field, and it does bring a lot of fear to us.
Hmm.
My wife has owned the house, or she has purchased her house and she's been there for fifteen years. And, you know, we plan on paying the house off, and that's where they're gonna take us out of a body bagging. Hate to say it any other, other way, but we don't want to leave, we like it there.
Hmm.
But one of the things that we're looking at is ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road, we hope to still be alive and be enjoying that area. And the biggest problem that we're looking at is, you know, you guys are talking about H Y A coming up with their own financing, which in turn, I hope they can. If they could come up with some kind of financing, that's great. But I would really, 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 and I think that any resident in here wants to have some kind of a recreational area, but it doesn't have to be a giant scheme like this. Why not make it something smaller? It was brought up about tournaments, it was brought up about, uh, parking, people speeding. And right now, there's a lot of problems, uh, on Nolt Road, with people speeding as it is. And we've got all kinds of problems with parking in our development. And there's times where we have entire streets where we could barely get through them one car at a time because people have come to visit somebody that they're having a small get-together or whatever. What happens when we've got a ball field there that all the parking spots are full? And then they've got all these people that they want to come see their son, their daughter, their niece, their nephew, their cousin play. And then they don't have any place to park, they're gonna come park in front of my house. Am I supposed to call a tow truck? I don't want to be that guy. I really don't. I try to be nice to everybody because you get what you give in this world. So, another thing I would like to say is I want to give you accolades for what you said in the beginning, where you were talking about this being a potential plan, and you wanted to make sure that you reiterated that it was a potential plan. Sure, it is a potential plan, but you guys picked one hell of a potential plan to put out in front of us. Enough to scare us enough to have a bunch of people in here. And my wife has a wonderful son that he played ball for Hemfield, and he enjoyed himself the whole time he was there. I have nieces and nephews, they play sports, they own travel teams, they go all over different places, they're in Mountville. So they don't really have a whole lot to do, but go other places to play. They wish they could have something like this, too. I just want people to really think this through before they go and put this giant stadium in. Because I was looking at some numbers right before I came to this meeting. And in two thousand and seven, a field that was half of this size, just, well, actually, a quarter of this size, they were talking one field, was three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars a year to maintain. Then they took off like the concession stands and things like that, and there was about a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and forty-five thousand dollar deficit. Who's gonna? that. And there was about a 125 to 145,000 dollar deficit. Who's gonna pick that up? HYA only has certain amount of money that they could put out. Are they gonna be selling that many candy bars? People will all be sick of eating chocolate. I mean, even me, you know, I'm a big guy. I like chocolate. So, yeah, I, I think that this needs a lot more, uh, conceptual views. And I think that whoever you hired to contract to design this, they did an outstanding job scaring the snot out of us. But I really would like to see them come up with some other alternative plans for us. If you guys are really serious about doing this, you own this piece of property. You can do with it whatever you want. That's the beauty of living in America. But you, you have to keep all the residents happy too. And I think that offering us some other options, viable options to look at would be beneficial to everyone.
And I think we've heard you on that and, and we're open to that. We're, that's not, you know, again, we, the task that we sent our engineer was, you know, what can all go here? Just so we know, what is it that can fit here? Can we get pickleball? Can we get tennis? Can we get soccer fields? If we put baseball fields in. And again, let's not put baseball fields in somewhere that we're tearing them out in 10 years. So.
I understand you don't want to tear a baseball field out in 10 years, but also Field Three is gonna be blaring lights right into my, my backyard. I like to sit in my backyard and have a little fire once in a while with some friends and have a beer.
I hear you. Conceptual, conceptual.
Back to the conceptual thing, but you know what? I'm still gonna like beer when I'm 80 years old. Still gonna like to have a fire.
Well, I didn't say that was conceptual, but.
No, that's reality.
Well, I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much for hearing me.
Do we have anyone else in the row behind? Yes, sir.
Tony Dig, 3337 Stillwell Drive. Um, just for the record, I'd just like to go that I'm against the current plan. If you want to reduce the panic and the negative comments, change the plan.
Again, guys, I just want to reiterate, this is conceptual. It, I, I cannot say this enough. This is a conceptual, one more time, yes.
I'd imagine that 99% of the people in here realize that it's conceptual, but it's in front of us. And there's no alternatives.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone else in the next row? Anyone else in the back row? Okay. Anyone else overall? Mr. Zuber?
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Yes, sir.
Now I have a question. And I'm gonna, I'm asking this for Chris.
Okay.
If the Hemfield Youth Association didn't design this plan, who did?
Our engineer. We asked our engineer.
How much did that cost?
I'm not sure. Do we have a number? We can get it.
I couldn't tell you what it was. I can get it to you.
Yeah, we can find that out.
So, you're already using taxpayers' money to fund this?
Sure. And absolutely. And that's completely and 100% justifiable. If we're gonna do anything here, we had to find out first of all, if we're gonna put ball fields here, where are they gonna go? Okay, so, um, you know, again, it's not that we're not going to spend zero dollars or we're not going to try to help them in kind in certain ways. And we want to be transparent. And it's not just HYA baseball. If somebody came to us and said, hey, you know, we want to partner with you to build pickleball courts, can we put them here? You know, we can raise the money to build the courts, you know, and, and put in our share of parking, we would work with them. So, you know, again, that's, that's where we're at. And honestly, you know, everybody's focused on this conceptual plan. And the reality is you're probably looking at a couple backstops and baseball diamonds for the next five years. So.
Okay, I just, I just want, I'll tell Chris. I'll let her know. Thanks.
I just add one thing. I'm sorry, but there is also a group that came in to talk to us about a dog park. So, there's a separate entity that would like to work on the dog park and they would raise some money for it. We have two pickleball leagues in the township. They are not here tonight, I don't believe, but they are gung ho on pickleball. And I think we're hoping that, or if they want them there, they may have to come up with some money to do that too. So, it's true. It's not just HYA. There are other groups that are interested in this site and also want to work with us to get things built in the distant future. Conceptual.
Anyone else that did not get a chance to speak that wants to speak on this issue? Yes, sir.
Hi, Gary Patterson, 3337 Nolte Route. Um, I've lived across the street from this field for 38 years. Um, I do not like the plan as seen, but what really scares me now is that you just said, there's only gonna be two baseball diamonds there for the next five years.
Let me, let me, let me correct that. That, that's my vision or my common sense intuition on what's gonna happen. So, I don't want to make, mislead anybody that that's absolutely in stone. There, there may, may not be. There may not be anything in a couple of years. There may be two diamonds. That's what I meant, or point I was trying to make.
Okay. I, I also agree with the gentleman who spoke earlier that said, it would be nice if you came up with another concept. Um, one plan does not fit all. Um, that's one. And secondly, for the two fields that are gonna be there in the next five years.
Potential.
Potentially, conceptually. Um, what are they gonna do for the parking? Is the parking going in first?
So, all of that stuff's gonna have to be worked out. And again, no, but again, folks, we're at step one. And you're asking us questions like we're at step, at the end of the process.
Okay. Back to what I was saying before, I've lived there for 38 years. I don't want my next 20 years to be 20 years of agita.
Okay, got it.
So, if you're gonna do it, like, do it in a year? But, but don't do that.
Well, I know we can't make that promise. All right, anyone else, folks? Okay. Anything else from the board on this?
For the last meeting, I stole Mr. Russell's. It's only appropriate that I yield to him at this point.
At this point, I got nothing more to offer. I think I will comment on, on the one email that went out. Um, we, this got brought up at a public meeting. It was in our October budget meeting. We were going over the budget items and HYA showed up to our meeting, uh, requesting assistance with possibly locating a field. They were actually asking if they could locate a baseball field on the Nestle Road track, where we just were talking about earlier about the farming plot that we're putting in there. And that's, if anybody's aware of that, that's a very steep track and it would have been very expensive for HYA to build on there. All it was said was, is before we can even agree to them doing anything on this track, we need to put something together on paper, uh, so that, that the stadium could, or the stadium, so the, the baseball fields could be located at this point. What they were talking about doing was putting up some backstops and some, basically some diamond tech, um, pitcher mound and infield, and that was it. They don't have the money to put in a press box and do these other things at this point. Uh, so, here are the comments that have been made. Uh, we're very cognizant of costs. We, if you sat in our meeting, two meetings, three meetings ago, we went over our capital, um, plan. We actually do have a capital plan for the township. We are funding a number of projects, including the Centerville Air and Change Project that you guys are all seeing at Route 30 right now. That's costing the township up towards $4 million and PennDOT's picking up the other 45 plus million dollars for that project. Um, so, we only have so much money to go into. And I was expressed to HYA that we simply do not have in our budget the ability to take on another park project. So, as Mr. Wigglesworth has correctly stated, this is a long-term process. In the previous meeting, I pointed out that Aheer Park took 25 years to get to the point of where we're at right now. And to build the dream park, it took a community effort. I was one of the ones that led that back when, uh, that was done. So, we recognized at that time that our park, if you guys remember, was starting to fall apart. We were having some kids that were getting stung by hornets and stuff. And there was a lot of problems with the park. And we decided we had to repair it. But we didn't have the money, so we did a community build. Um, and what we started off with and what we ended up with was a totally different plan by the time it, what got built and constructed and what the concept plans are. If the township goes forward and does a shret like Mr. Wigglesworth says, you got an opportunity to develop a lot of different plans. There's one lady in the audience that saw that was really interesting, going heavy on the passive recreation. There's, you have concepts for that. Uh, there's a lot of different things that can occur on this site. Um, it really is just a concept plan. Usually when you give it something like this, I am an engineer by trade. You give an engineer a task and say, max out what you could put on the site. This is what you get. This is maxed out. Where actually it gets built is always a lot different reality than what is in a concept of a engineer's sketch plan. So, there's, there's a lot of room for compromise on all this. I think there's a fair balance between those that don't want to have anything and those that would like to see everything. And there's gonna be room in between for the community to provide input and everybody will guess and.
Um, I would like to add, as, uh, Mr. Russell said, that Amosher Park is basically built out. We tried to find spots for pickleball courts and believe it or not, as big as this site is, there's police, um, for security reasons are trying to keep that, um, area up in that corner, uh, keep the public out of there. Um, there's parking and all, but long story short, this park is pretty well maxed out. Um, we've had pickleball, two pickleball leagues, as I mentioned. We had two women want to start a dog park. We did have HYA. And what they all need is land. They don't have the land to build these things. They can get the members and get their own money together, but they just still need a place to put it. And the township and everyone owns that land. It's, it's public, it's township land. That's what we started with was just, we have the land. Now, what can we do with it? Or what do these various groups, what can they do with it? Um, also, there was a mention of conflict of interest. We were very sensitive to that. I can only speak for myself. I had a son that played HYA baseball 10 years ago. He's now 23. I think if any of us have children playing in that league, by the time these are actually built, they'll probably be 23 and, and out of the, out of the, uh, HYA. Um, there's interest in a dog park, so suppose, you know, any supervisor that owns a dog could have a conflict of interest with that. And I don't play pickleball. Someday I may pick it up. And so, that, again, I mean, we are active in the community and there are gonna be things that we do that could benefit from that. And I think, um, we will make that clear, but we can't avoid every single conflict because of the multitude of uses that could go there. We don't know.
Mr. Bennett?
Uh, the one thing I like to say is that, um, I'd like to hear more about what you would like there. I suspect that.
Well, I think that's gonna be good for the charrette.
Well, but I mean, but even as we get, we get information and emails in, you know, um, we've, we've talked and discussed in recent meetings about the passive, uh, recommendations that we received from many in the, in the community. And we think that's a good idea. You know, what you're looking at is, in this plan, it looks big. Baseball fields represent eight acres. There's 40 other acres out there where we could do a lot of things differently and, and will with the feedback from the community.
Mr. Weaver?
Nothing else from the scene, right?
Okay. I, I have nothing. I think I saw a hand come up and we're gonna take one more question and put this dead horse to bed tonight.
Megan Connell, 1157 Old Eagle Road. Um, I just want to correct something. July 13th, HYA came to the board and asked for more fields. July 27th, it was brought up at the, um, rec, uh, meeting. Uh, August 17th, the proposal passed and went to David Miller Associates. So, it didn't happen in October.
So, actually, I'm very glad you brought that up. I, I didn't know, but to our credit, that's public information and it all happened at public meetings. So, I think like what I really want to echo here to, to follow that comment is, I guess what frustrates us is we're part of this community. We love this community. And in some of these emails, it's beyond the pale where, you know, we're being accused of doing things illicit or secret to put in this monstrosity of a park. And, you know, folks, again, you know, Scott Russell just sort of outlined our approach to this, outlined some of the, the big projects that we have going on. And again, I want to echo, we have not raised taxes and can't say this enough since 2008. And there's not many municipalities that can say that. So, we've done a great job, if I want to pat ourselves on the back of managing your money. Um, and we spend it like it's our own. Um, so, like when I hear some of that stuff, it is, it is frustrating. But the fact that you said that is just, you know, evidence that, you know, all of this stuff happened above board and whether we remembered it correctly or not, it was all in public meetings. It wasn't in the shadows and it wasn't in secret. So, thank you. Um, with that, let's move on to our next item, new business. Do we have any new business? Non-traffic commission. Um, we had a traffic commission meeting, uh, tonight. Uh, it was pretty quiet. Uh, we did have, um, a complaint for speeding on, uh, Nestle Road at the, um, in between, um, Nolte Road and, um, Centerville Road. And, uh, Chief's gonna add it to her list. Up next, a public comment for any comments related to non-agenda items. Did anybody want to adjust the board about something that we don't have on the agenda tonight? Is there anyone, um, from Zoom that wants to? Okay. Managers report.
Again, I have a roomful of people. So, Centerville Road South, as you mentioned earlier, is progressing along. Um, I did misspeak in my manager's report. The three houses are not down. They're gonna be, be brought down on Monday, the 20th, after the fire company has done their, their, uh, training in one of them. Uh, utility work is, is coordinating through and, and they're fully engaged with all the, all the agencies.
One. Page one of one. East Hemfield Township Traffic Engineering Services. Compensation 2023.
Talking to you.
McMahonAssociates.com. McMahon, a woman.
The Church Street paving project, which is scheduled for, uh, this year, next year, has been awarded. It's the PennDOT project. Uh, we are in constant contact with PennDOT regarding that. Uh, Diane and the school are doing the coordination with that. If there's any additional questions, uh, she would be able to answer any more details as far as we know. There is attempt to, uh, schedule a meeting with the school district in the next week or so, just to do a little bit more coordination with PennDOT. The Old Roarstown Road project is slowly moving along. Uh, the PPNL poll has been put back where it belongs. We are struggling with coordination of utilities. Um, Northwark Southern's throwing some bumps in the road. It's dealing with a constant barrage of, of issues. Nothing that we can succumb, but it does take a bit of time to get through that. Uh, they are pushing a deadline to get out of the stream before trout season. So, things are moving along though, slowly. Farmingdale Road project, uh, that has been awarded to the JVI Construction, that's anticipated to start construction in spring of this year and should be done by the fall. The Dairy Road Bridge Replacement is in the design. The Dairy Road Bridge Replacement is in the design phase for this year, and then that's gonna be a construction project for twenty twenty-four. The Route Seventy-two and Lititz Road, um, project, which is a temporary signal at that intersection due to fatalities. We have hit a slight roadblock with the, with PennDOT and the permit issuance. We are talking to our legislators who are talking to PennDOT and attempt to, um, get that through the process. The truck study, as was mentioned at the traffic commission meeting, is a work in progress. We are meeting with West Hempfield Township at the end of February. The Stony Battery Trail work is pretty much on hold until spring. I have reached out to the, uh, property owners at the, the wedge between Stony Battery and the shortcut and Kaufman. I'm waiting to hear back from them, to meet with them, to see where we go regarding, um, doing changes to the intersection or moving some of the shed and, um, landscaping on the property. McFarland Drive, we are meeting with the property owners next Tuesday at six P M to talk to them about their flow plane, um, issues and what's happening on Aher Park. Aher Park, uh, to let you know, is, uh, we're under construction on the far east side. There is a wet lens being created over there as well as a trail system to connect to our existing trail system. Uh, board goals you approved tonight. Um, vacancy exists at the, uh, on the planning commission, an alternate position is available. I need some direction from the board in terms of how you want to proceed with that. If you want to do it as a board, as we've done in the past, or just do it as a planning group, um, interview. But I have tentatively scheduled interviews for March eighth at six P M.
How have we handled these in the past? And I'm sorry, I know we've done it before, but I forget.
The most recent one, it, it was the entire board.
Yeah.
Uh, and the entire planning commission. I believe the entire planning commission is planning on attending.
Okay.
Nate, he's still, still here? Yeah, he's still here.
How many, um, applicants do we have and when is the cutoff?
We have four.
Okay. Are we still taking applications?
We have not advertised that because we had four that expressed interest for probably a year, year and a half. And they've actually attended some of the planning commission meetings. Uh, we had not advertised it, no.
Okay. Um, well, you know what, we probably should. Um, I think the four that have been there, you know, we should probably give them a little preference. They've been putting in work, but it would be good to get, to keep that list growing of people that are interested to serve.
If it's okay with the board, I'd, rather than spend the money for, uh, add in the paper, maybe tweet it out on social media.
Sure, that'd be great.
All right, we can do that.
Yeah.
Um, we had the Police Department accolades, um, Public Safety Working Group met. We talked about Valor and his call to service. The Landisville South Colebrook and Junction signage, uh, which was ordered is now in place, at least, uh, on both intersections. We do have, I think, one more sign that we need to go up. Um, the license plate readers have been installed on the four vehicles, so those are in, I don't know if they're on service.
They're being installed the next two weeks.
Okay. We got tactical medical kits through a grant and also contributions from the township. And those are being distributed to the officers. And John Kotmeyer, the chief, uh, talked to us about Hempfield's relief audited and some comments, which he is addressing with them directly. We also talked about apparatus replacement schedule and that's being monitored. And it's very possible that, given the, the, the cost of those vehicles, the need for, uh, people to man them, that we might be extending those replacement dates further out into the future. But, uh, Chief Kotmeyer is on it and, and doing a lot of monitoring on that front. Um, we also are talking to Roarstown Fire Company about a, a stipend program, uh, to encourage recruitment and retention. That's being formulated, formulated by the chief. In regard to emergency management, Diane does receive, uh, statistics from Penn State Lifeline. If the board is interested in seeing those, that, uh, they just need to let her know and she will certainly get that information to them. The Park and Recreation Group did meet. We met with Hummer Turf Grass to talk about the lease on the Fifty Acre Sod Farm. Uh, we decided the communication, we didn't make any decisions. The communication is key as we move forward. They do have a crop in place. It won't get harvested probably until the end of next, this year. And then the real question is, do they reseed or don't they? And we still have not made that decision. They would be interested in using a portion of the acreage, uh, if we don't use it all at one time. I did attend two meetings. The Lancaster Inter-Municipal Committee met. Um, they talked about the difficulty of replacing police officers. There's many municipalities that are experiencing that issue. We talked about the city and their home rule efforts. Uh, it was noted that Lhasa received a hundred and eleven million dollar grant from Penn Vest to, uh, improve their infrastructure. And that Lancaster County Planning Commission was looking at the growth boundaries, which has been in place for thirty years. So they don't anticipate any changes or anything significant changes. But the urban growth boundary, uh, dictates where growth can happen. And they haven't been adjusted in, in over thirty years. And then lastly, uh, Diane and I did attend a meeting at Penn State to talk about the, uh, third helicopter base that, uh, Penn State Health is planning on putting in. I'm gonna turn it over to her since she knows EMS.
Sure.
Night and day.
Um, so on Monday, we met with the leadership from Penn State Health, Lancaster Medical Center, Lifeline, um, critical care transport, both air medical and ground medical. And, um, they provided information to us as well as, um, state and federal, uh, legislators, letting us know that they've seen a significant increase in the need, um, across the EMS system for additional transport units. And so as such, they hope to be able to station a helicopter twenty-four seven at Lancaster Medical Center to increase the ability for those critical care patients to be transported more quickly as well as a ground unit, uh, that would be doing inter-facility transport. So those patients that can't be cared for locally could be transported to specialty units.
Question, the curved detour on Church, is that just south of Bowman and that curve?
I'm sorry, Ed, I can't hear you.
You have to step up to the mic.
Curved detour on Church, is that the curve that's south of Bowman Road?
That's correct.
And so that'll be a detour Bowman and.
I, I don't know. We don't have a PennDOT-approved detour plan for that yet. We, we hope to be able to nail that down during the meeting that we hope to set up in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Is there any action for the, uh, Penn State that they're gonna need from us?
No, they're, they're, they're zoning and their, their building is up to code as it needs to be. And there isn't anything needed from us, just letting us know the additional services they'll be providing to our community.
Okay, great. Any other questions on the manager's report? Any comments or questions from the audience on the manager's report? All right, one last time around, uh, any other comments? Okay, hearing none, we are going to adjourn. It is eight fifty-five. Am I reading right? Eight thirty-five, eight thirty-five. Sorry, I took off my glasses. All right, thanks, thank you, everyone.